You were making me look good, weren't you?
Call to order. City Clerk?
Councilmember Agency Director Mann Marcus here. Cilio?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chairman Smith?
Here.
Mayor Chairman Paris?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Pastor Herbert Howard is going to lead us in the prayer tonight. And you're from the First Southern Baptist Church of...
Southern Baptist, yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Well, of course.
All right. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to come and lead you in the invocation. Bow our heads at this time, please. Father God, we come before you this day and Father, we just, Father invites you into our presence. Father, fill this room with your glory, with your righteousness, with your justice. Father, with your wisdom. Father, with your compassion. Fathers, your son, Jesus, taught us to pray. Father, he said that we should pray that your kingdom would come on earth as it is in heaven. Father, may your kingdom reside here with your presence. And Father, may you give the guidance and the direction that is needed in this city by these leaders and by its citizens. And Father, we thank you, Father, for your goodness towards us, provide everything that is needed to function as a governing body. And Father, we just give you thanks. We give you praise for who you are. Father, most of all, I thank you for our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And it's in Jesus's name I pray and ask these things. Amen.
Bishop Burns, you want to lead the flag?
Thank you so very much. Would you join me with your hand over your heart, your right hand over your heart? Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bishop. I guess I had to stay up. So, is Hunter Horn here? Hunter is the athlete of the month, this month. Hey, my son was a volleyball player. Hunter was selected to the first team of the All Golden League and All CIF volleyball team this past spring as Quartz Hill went undefeated and won their CIF volleyball championship. As a middle blocker, Hunter averaged 12 kills during the volleyball playoffs. You know, there's nothing more exciting than a kill. They're just really... He is also the starter on both offense as tight end and defense as linebacker for the Quartz Hill football team. During the winter season, Hunter completes his three sport participations as the starting center on the basketball team. Do you study?
I do.
He plays volleyball for the highly ranked Pacific Palisades Club. So, you're in club volleyball?
Yes, sir.
And he's involved in many school activities, including the student council. You know, you've got to be careful with that. That's how I got started. The Quartz Hill Choir. And performs community service as a member of the Lancaster United Methodist Church. Oh, here it is. And he has a 3.8 grade point average as he enters his senior year at Quartz Hill, receiving academic letters and a four O recognition awards. And you want to have a career in chiropractic medicine and physical therapy. Congratulations. That's fantastic. And this is for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And now we come to the sad part, and that's Lyle Norton's going to be leaving us. And I've known Lyle now for almost 20 years. Nobody has served the city as well as Lyle. And Lyle, more importantly, you've always done it with a clarity of heart that I've always admired and respected. I've never once saw you get involved in any toxic nonsense. It was always what was best for the city, and you were constantly reminding everyone around you that that was what the goal was. And with that, I'd turn it over to the city manager.
This is truly a sad day for Lyle because he's been working for 20 years with the city. His wife Karen is here. And he has the honor of giving the biggest plaque I think you've ever given to your boy. But bigger than Dennis is your... Couple of things to say about Lyle. One, I know if you're looking at some of the cards, there are a couple of people here that wanted to talk about the Musical Road, which we'll get to, I'm sure, at the end of the meeting. But that's something that brought enjoyment to the community, brings enjoyment. Let me tell you what this man has done. I joined here, where the soccer's in because of his leadership. We have a B8 softball complex because of his leadership. Obviously, everything's a team effort, but you need leadership. We have the Jet Hops because of his leadership. We have the Poppy Festival because of his leadership. We have an El Pack because of his leadership. And the program, and it's not just the facilities themselves, but it's the engaging presentation. It's what happens at those places that make them special. And that's where Lyle just partly come in. So, for 20 years, when I grew up here, we really could say there was something to do. Okay? That's not true. There's a lot to do. Lyle had a large part in that, making that happen and enriching all of our lives. As in terms of organization, as a colleague, I am truly going to disallow because, as the mayor said, he would always give you the straight scoop, his honest opinion. He was always a fire. I tried to give him a compliment once. I bundled him a little bit. I told him that what I appreciate most about him is that he could leave and his department would go on without you. And he told me that a lot. But that's a compliment because the highest compliment you can give a professional is that you peed and you made it better and that. And that you're so ingrained in your department and the people report to you what needs to be done and what the goal is and what the mission is, that they know what to do when you're there. And we have a great department, so you're applying leadership of Bob Green right now. But I'm going to sincerely, as Lyle, as a colleague and as a friend. All right.
Can you post really quickly?
You know what the addition, oh, we get the picture, okay.
There we go.
Thank you, Mark. I do advise Mark, before he has some people group a lot, share a level of baseball team that isn't from this area. Anyway, and also I did try to avoid all that toxicity, and that's why I've been here for 20 years. You know, when I came here 20 years ago, I didn't expect to spend the last 20 years of my life in Lancaster or any other place because when you're 40, you can't think of spending, you know, anywhere until you're 60 years old. But, and I'll regret saying this, is that I had tremendous support from elected officials. And, you know, I'm glad to see Henry here tonight, but I didn't want him to hear me say that because I always told him and Dennis, the city official, that they didn't give me enough support. But I did get tremendous support from city officials, from elected officials. I have staff that was always willing to accept the predicaments, or that, I should say, the challenges that I got into. And we all have embodled, who realizes, a community that values cultural leisure services. And so, put all those together, and I stayed 20 years. But thank you.
City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, any items to remove from the agency consent calendar? Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt the agency's consent calendar.
Second? Second, yeah. It's unanimous with Councilman Mann absent. On the council consent calendar, anything we want to pull? Is there a motion?
Move to adopt the consent calendar of the council.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Unanimous with Councilman Mann absent.
One question, just a legal thing. Mr. McKeon, should we excuse Councilman Mann? Yes, sir, that would be inappropriate. Yeah, I'll move.
Do we have to vote on it? Through a second?
Second.
It's unanimous. Okay. I have one. To reevaluate the council reading times. Staff have anything they want to...
From what the council may want to weigh in on some of it, from staff's perspective, we haven't seen any issue in terms of meeting attendance, participation through people sending information and letters, what have you. From staff's perspective, quite honestly, we appreciate being a little bit fresher and a little bit earlier and really haven't seen a negative in it. We did place this on the agenda because council had asked to place it on 90 days after the meeting change in case council or the public wanted to make any comments. And I think we do have a speaker card eventually.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Polka? We missed you last week, or two weeks ago. We were afraid you were arrested or something.
I was trying to get a bail thing going, but then they told me no, you were okay. Why was I, why would I be arrested? I don't do anything wrong. For the, since you've started this council meetings at 5:00, I've noticed there have been quite a few people who tended to come in between 5:00 and 6:00 because they can't make it here on time. I myself today had to be down in the valley, although I did manage to make it back up because traffic happened to be in my favor. If you look at statistically, the people in this community who have internet access, it's less than 50% of the population. About 35% of the population have to travel down below to work and try to make it back up here in time to attend the council meetings. It's rather unfair for, you know, citizens to have to try to beat the traffic and everything else to try to get back up here to try to attend the council meeting when they can't do it either on the internet or, you know, they don't happen to have a local cable channel to be able to watch the council meetings on the cable channel or, you know, have access to email or anything else like that. It's rather unfair that they'd have to, you know, miss out on some of this fun in the council meeting between 5:00 and 6:00. So, I respectfully request that the council meeting be moved up to 6:00. And by the way, you yourself have been late twice to the council meetings.
And I want you to know how much I appreciate that you're keeping score for me.
Oh, absolutely, you know. You were late 10 minutes today, and you were late 15 minutes about two months ago, so, you know. And I appreciate you were keeping track of, you know, me and I being here two weeks ago.
I was just worried about you, wasn't I?
Oh, well, I appreciate that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments?
One comment. I appreciate the comments that many members of our community, even if they work locally, work until 5:00, and there's difficulty in getting to the council chambers by 5:00. I think it's incumbent if we ask our citizens to be here at 5:00 that we should be able to ourselves meet that goal. Since we've changed to 5:00, we've had seven meetings with the 5:00 PM start time, and six of the times we've started late for a variety of reasons. I think sliding the time to 5:30 would make sure that we can hold ourselves to the same standard we're asking our citizens to be held to, and would give more time for our citizens to be here. I'll make a motion that we change our meeting time to 5:30.
Is there a second? Dies for lack of second. Okay. Did I do that in under three minutes? Councilwoman Marcus, do you want to introduce your Section 8 Commission?
I'd love to.
Thank you.
This is really something that's near and dear to my heart, and the Section 8 Commission that Mayor Paris suggested that we start, and he asked me to oversee that. I'm very proud to do that. And we've already introduced the people, and it's been in the paper, and we're excited about it. And every one of the people that are on this commission have expressed to me that they're ready to go, and we are going to get going very soon. So, if you'll go ahead and just stand when I call your names. Brett Banks, Jean Gaynor, Larry Grooms, Leroy Halli, Risa Schepler, Tim Sturtevant, and Perry Watkins. This is our Section 8 Commission, and I know that we're going to see great things from them. They're going to be really the face to the citizens. It's going to be an effort where they're going to help us out. The city staff has done a great job, but we are, we're ready to roll, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you so much. Give them a hand.
Thank you. We also received a letter from Michael Antonovich, giving us his full support in bringing the housing authority to a regional level. So, that ought to be happening pretty quickly. So, I'm kind of excited about that, as I'm sure everyone else will be. Okay, City Manager.
Yes, well, Mr. Mayor, just as a technicality, those are your nominations?
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, if that, if those are your nominees, Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we accept those nominations.
You know, we're going to make him the city attorney.
No, thank you. You've done a pretty good job as the parliamentarian up there, keeping it going straight. That's my motion.
And I second that.
Okay, let's vote. And it's unanimous with Councilman Mann absent. City Manager, any announcements?
Just that I appreciate all the work of staff and council. Aerospace Walk of Honor was a tremendous success, as it always is, and this was the first year I was privileged to just have to show up and read something. The other years before, I had to work on it, and it's much harder to actually help put it together and put the hundreds of hours in. So, I really appreciate staff, the community, our sponsors, and council.
Thank you. And thank you to the staff.
May I make a comment concerning...
How can you say no to a bishop? Come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, and to all of the staff. I just want you all to know that I really, really enjoyed attending the Walk of Honor and meeting all of the guys with the exception, even the five that were selected the other day, I knew them. So, out of it was Air Force Base. I started out there in the early 60s, so I know all of those guys. And I just appreciate so much you all allowing me to be a part of that, and I just want to say thank you, that's all. To my city manager, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Burns. City Clerk, any announcements?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for public business from the floor on non-agendized items. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. If you'll fill those out and bring them forward. And please print as clearly as possible so that if the staff or the city council needs to get in touch with you, we can, we will have your appropriate phone numbers and addresses. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins. A yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other people to have their three minutes as well. We also ask that if you would, please leave your personal belongings at your seat. State law does prohibit the city council from taking action on any matters under non-agendized, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. And to, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor, staff, councils. I wanted to speak on the Musical Highway. It may be too late to...
Too late.
...do anything about it, but a possible solution that might have helped before it was gone would have been to put a 5 mile an hour speed limit on that from 8:00 at night till 8:00 in the morning. And that seems to be the worst time that people were aggravated by the noise in the vicinity. And I think if we could have implemented that, it would have been a possible solution for that problem. But since it's too late, so be it.
The primary reason, we were looking at ways to divert the sound, but the primary reason we decided to go ahead and pave it over, and then we're going to redo it with, hopefully with Honda's help out on probably Avenue G, was the safety concerns. And what was happening is that so many people were using it and then immediately making a U-turn to use it again, that you were having a safety issue. And so, there really wasn't any choice. When we move it to Avenue G, we'll do it at a place where they can make a left turn safely. And that was the reason, the primary reason.
They are going to do it again then, huh?
Yes, yes. I mean, how often can you be the first in the world? I'm sorry, what?
It'll be further away from residential areas.
Yes, we'll probably put it out by Fox, the Fox Corridor.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Sunstrom?
Can we put a Starbucks out there with the Musical?
It's a musical road. Lyle will try and sell it as a music festival.
Well, you know, we were thinking of, you know, doing it for jingles and, you know, making it as a revenue source, but that's just me. Don't pay attention to me. Yes, sir.
My name is Carl Sunstrom, and I have lived out here in Antelope Valley since 1965. And I know all of you are sitting here looking at me saying, gee, doesn't look that old, but we won't go into that. In any event, some of the things that I wanted to speak about, I don't know if the city council can do anything about it or the city manager, but a lot has happened out here since I've moved out here, and I'm sure a lot has happened since a lot of you have moved out here, and some of you have raised out here. One of them I'd like to bring up are the idiots that are walking around with their pants down to their knees. First off, we should not have to be subjected to that. And what's even worse is, is that our children should not have to be subjected to that in our residential areas, in our retail stores, or anyplace else. Now, I've heard that there are other cities and other states that have passed ordinances against this that have either stopped it or allowed them to go maybe one or two inches below. But something needs to be done about it. Section 8 housing, I agree with what you said, Mr. Mayor Paris, in the last council meeting. We need to get rid of them. I happen to live in an area that I've been in for 37 years, has the highest concentration of Section 8 housing in my particular area within a half mile. We have problems with ice cream trucks. I see too many ice cream trucks stopping on my street in front of houses when there's nobody out there waiting for ice cream. And pretty soon, two or three hoodlums come out of the house and go up to the ice cream truck and do their deal, and they're not buying ice cream. Now, I know that the sheriff's department knows this is going on, and I don't know what they can do about it, whether they actually have to catch them in the act or what, but people need to get more involved in their neighborhoods to stop this kind of stuff, write down the license plates of these people, and watch what's going on. We have too many empty houses in the valley. Some of them are in my neighborhood. We know when you go to bed at night and there's a vacant house, and you wake up the next morning and there's 10 people living in there, there's a problem. And very probably, the people are squatters. That means they've moved into that house illegally, and whoever owns the home is not aware of it. You need to be aware of the things that are going on in your neighborhood and call the sheriff's department, call the code enforcement people, which I've done several times in the last four years. This has happened four times in my neighborhood, and I was right every single time, and these people left very quickly. I'd also like to say a lot about going into retail stores and seeing people illegally parked in handicapped areas. I don't know how many people we have in the parking enforcement, but we need to do something about that. You can go into almost any retail store and see people parked in the handicap areas that don't belong there. They back their cars into these handicapped areas. They sit there in the car with the engine running so that they can move out very quickly when they see a sheriff's car or parking enforcement come along. And my time is up, so thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Sunstrom. Captain, would you look into the ice cream truck thing? And I'd like to know back if that's a problem. If it is, perhaps we need to do something about that. All right? Thank you. Veronica Munho. Councilwoman Marcus gave me lessons today.
May I hand your candy over there?
If you would just hand it to that gentleman in the suit right there. Lot of suits.
You're the ones, because I know you're mentally watching your figure and your looks and everything.
Thank you.
I have two quick questions. The first one is about the AIDS Walk.
I'm sorry.
The AIDS Walk. I've tried, I've left a message. I know you're really, really busy, so this is sometimes the easiest way to get ahold of you.
You could come on the walk. That's how he walks in the park, too.
I'm, yeah, I'm out doing a lot of community stuff, but obviously, I don't. The AIDS Walk that we're having, it was tentatively left as to whether or not you would be available. And because we have to have a preempt meeting to give everybody the information, I need to find out whether or not you absolutely are going to go.
If you talk to the woman with the blonde hair, that's Cindy, Cindy will tell you if I'm available, and if I'm available, I'll come.
Okay, and the other question is about the discussion that we had after the last meeting, the educational English to teach the kids.
Yes.
Well, I have gone forward with that, and I wanted to know if there's, you know, if I'm so...
It's probably, it's probably time to set up a meeting with Parks and Recreation. And if Mr. Bozigian will set that up for us, I will attend that meeting, okay?
Okay, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Maisels? Oh, I forgot you.
Oh, I forgot you. Ms. Munos and fellow citizens, councilman and the mayor. What I propose is a statute, and the statute is from the excerpts of the Education Code, section 300 to 340, and the U.S. Department of Education. Being that our children are under this code when they go to school, and accordingly, I've taken those paragraphs and put it into a statute for the benefit of the citizens of here at Lancaster. In absence, it says, "We, the city of Lancaster, find and declare as follows. English, recognized by the state of California as the leading world language for science, technology, and international business, thereby being the language of economic opportunity for all citizens residing in this municipality, shall be the primary language for members of our society in order to participate in the American dream of economic and social advancement." Second paragraph, "Whereas the English language is the national public language of the United States of America, is spoken by the majority of California residents, is hereby so adopted to be the primary language of the city of Lancaster. In this, we adopt what our children are learning in the schools," excerpts of Education Code, sections 300 to 340. Let me call your attention to 320, which states, "Any school board member or other elected official or public school teacher or administrator who willfully and repeatedly refuses to implement the terms of this statute by providing such an English-language educational option of an available public school to a California school child may be held personally liable for fees and actual damages by the child's parents or legal guardian. We, the citizens of Lancaster and the United States, recognize the importance that our immigrant population learn and adopt English for their benefit so they can achieve the American dream." Hispanic kids, about half the students are Hispanic, and according to this of the Pew, most Hispanic students, about 84%, were born in the United States. Almost 20% speak English poorly, and about 70% speak a language other than English at home. I left you the information.
Thank you.
Any questions? Any questions?
That's not how this works. I'm sorry. If you're gonna get a speaker card in, you have to get it in now. I'm gonna close the speaker cards in the next 30 seconds. Any more speaker cards? It's closed. Thank you.
It is Marilyn Hilton.
Did I say it wrong?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. I'm used to it.
It's a speech impediment.
Yeah, it's just the way it's spelled. Anyway, first of all, I would like to thank Mr. Bozigian for returning my call and such prompt manner this afternoon on such short notice before the council meeting. That was very generous of him to do that for me. I have several issues. First of all, about the musical road, yes, I'm very disheartened that the voice of a few people can persuade our officials to discontinue such a fine addition to our community.
Trust me, that wasn't the reason.
It was...
I mean, I'm a lawyer. I know this thing about accidents.
It was part of it, and I understand that there was a... Please let me get to my, rest of my part, please. Thank you. Mr. Bozigian mentioned to me on the phone that there were safety issues, and that's why it was paved over. I think if we, if there had been a little more thought put into it, there could have been some traffic solutions, some traffic restrictions and controls, like the gentleman said before, put in to accommodate the citizens, that would have been much less expensive and less time-consuming than rebuilding the whole project. This was actually one of the best entertainments, I believe, free entertainments that has come to the city of Lancaster.
Oh, come on!
Okay, I come from a real city. Anyway, this is one of the best free entertainments to come to the city of Lancaster, and it's a much bigger, would have been a much bigger draw to the city of Lancaster than the blooming Joshua trees. Part of the safety issues could have been resolved also by better street lighting down the streets, because, yes, I did drive the road. I drove it four times, and I had a ball, but it was very dark, and I even got my husband to smile, which is an amazing thing these days.
Did you make a U-turn?
One time, yes. But I, but I honestly tried to be very cautious, and I pulled past the, past 70th rather than making it in the middle of the intersection of 70th and K, because that is very dangerous to do.
You appreciate that.
And so, I did pass the street so that I wasn't doing it right in the middle of the intersection when I was driving. So, anyway, that is, that is my comments about the musical road, and I do hope that you do it, and I have much more to say about the water, water issues that we've been, that you've been talking about. I appreciate your concern for the water issues, but I feel that an ordinance and requirement for citizens to retrofit their homes is beyond your responsibility, and would put an undue financial burden on homeowners. It really should be the responsibility of the waterworks to, to control the water, and if we are having a water issue, the best way to control it is probably to raise prices. Yes, I'm telling you to raise prices. Anyway, I guess I'm done. Thank you.
Lyle Talbot, Lancaster. Two things. I missed the poppy on our letterheads and our vehicles.
Lyle, I'm sorry, but we have a rule. You can't bring something up to the dais. If you could give that to Brian Ludiki, we would appreciate it, okay?
What gift are you? It's a couple of working tools.
Thank you. Well, what is it?
You can show me, sure.
No, I'm sorry.
This'll help you, when you gavel and you get tired.
I love it.
This'll help you with the purring of the second anal.
Bring that up here. Thank you very much, Lyle. In case there's any doubt about what's coming. Oh, and Lyle, thank you for bringing that to my attention about the EIR on the Blue Fire Project. I, I looked into that, and that's absolutely something they should be doing.
Can I make an announcement?
Of course. You still got 60 seconds left. We'll even stop the clock for you to get up there.
You have to return that iron fist to Daisy's costume shop at your convenience.
Well, good. Now I don't have to declare it, huh?
As you heard it here first, there will be a public meeting, a community meeting regarding Blue Fire's lack of EIR, and what, we want to find out what the community thinks about it. Supervisor Antonovich is going to sponsor it and organize it and moderate it. I mean, his staff will. It'll be October 1st, Wednesday evening, a week from tomorrow, at Fire Station 129. And if you've got anything to say about this project, green waste to energy, sounds really good, but if you look into it, as I have, you'll find a lot of flaws, and a lot of work needs to be done, and we don't want to slip under the door here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Last Friday, I had contacted City Hall and was put in touch with Pauline East concerning the musical road, and she had said that she'd only received about 50 phone calls, and that it was split 50-50 on whether or not to keep the road, and I realize you guys are saying... Yeah, because I was rather upset that you guys... What I found amazing was how quickly you guys decided to get rid of it.
You know, I told him not to do it, you know, but he insisted.
Because I, the community has really enjoyed having it, obviously, with the, the traffic jams out there. But the thing I think I found the most concerning is Pauline East had said that the decision to, when she had, when I talked to her, that it was regarding the people and their lack of sleepability based off of the noise of the road as well as the U-turns. And that she, the calls dissenting the road that she'd received were from approximately seven to eight people, and it was repeat calls from those seven to eight people. My concern is that I'm not sure if that's true, that your decision was based off of just the U-turns, or if it really did include those five to seven people, because if it did...
Let me, let me restate what I said, okay? What we were going to look at was a way to make the sound deflect. It would deflect upwards, and then that would preserve the, the quality of the neighborhood. But before we got to that consideration, the safety issue became apparent, and when the safety issue became apparent, there really wasn't any decision to be made. We cannot maintain any type of hazard out there that we know about. I mean, it is our, we are obligated to fix it, and the city manager took prompt action just like he's supposed to, to mitigate any type of safety issue. And this was a real safety issue. There was going to be somebody seriously hurt if we didn't mitigate it quickly.
Has anybody been seriously hurt?
I'm sorry, what?
Has anybody been seriously hurt?
No, because we behaved appropriately and mitigated it appropriately. Now, we do recognize the value of this. I think it's a wonderful thing, and we're going to duplicate it out on Avenue G where it will be safe. You know, it's, it's just, you know, looking at circumstances.
Are we still making Honda pay?
I'm sorry.
Are we making Honda pay for the repavement if we're moving it, or are we...
Part of the deal with Honda was that they would fix the road if we wanted them to, and so, it has not cost us any money to date, and we are now negotiating with them to see if they'll do it again for, for free. And if not, we'll find other sponsors to do it, because it really is kind of sweeping the, the country as a really cool thing.
Right.
So, we are, we are going to bring it back. We're just gonna bring it back in a better place.
Okay.
Okay?
My other concern is the lighting on 70th. There's been several accidents where people have died. The fire chief in Quartz Hill on his motorcycle, and then there was another instant death on 62nd Street, because there's no lighting out there. And I know when I've done the musical road, I actually go up to J and then come back around. I haven't made the U-turns. But I do think that some lighting issues need to be addressed out that far. That was what I have to say.
Would you have Traffic look at that?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. And last but not least, David Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council, what a pleasure to be here tonight. I wanted to come for some reassurance that the government is still intact. I spent the entire day watching the Senate hearings on the bailout, and it seems to be some grim news coming. It's like the old Who song, "We'll be fighting in the streets with our children at our feet, and the morals that we worship will be gone." I don't know. You know, it seems like we're almost there, but I wanted to just wrap up a couple of things. Last time I was here, I talked about Theodore Roosevelt, and I noticed that some people, I call them Teddy, and recently, the last couple of weeks, I've seen Barack Obama, John McCain, and Oliver Northall call Theodore Teddy, so it's appropriate sometimes. Anyway, I was thinking today about our new slogan, "In God We Trust," and I wanted to talk about God a little bit, and then I saw Mahmoud Ahmadinejad in the council chambers, the United Nations talking today, and he had this long rant on God and the prophets, and just look at the guy, and you know that he wants to blow you up, and it's, it's kind of scary. But this is what I think about God in these situations. God, to me, represents the universal process, universal intelligence. So, when I think about God, I think that in one way, everything's working out the way it's supposed to. It's going according to the plan of God. Now, how we handle our human affairs is another matter, but I just wanted to come by tonight and say hello and see you all, and I can barely see you, but it's, it's fun to be here and participate, and it's reassuring. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay, any council reports?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was a, we had a joint powers authority meeting down at Supervisor Antonovich's office along with Supervisor Metzlfeldt from San Bernardino County. I thought the report was gonna be included in everybody's packet tonight, so I'm just going to defer till the next meeting and, and get that report so I can go over with you. It was pretty quick, but we are putting some money towards getting a consultant in to actually, as an executive, because it is taking a lot of staff time from both supervisors' office, so we'll do that next time.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Any council comments?
I have several.
Okay.
The, um, let's see, is it Marilyn had mentioned that there's not much free. I did want to mention that the aerospace program was free. It was open to the public, and that was an excellent. The city did such an excellent job on that, and it was free. The, the program that was at LPAC was free. It was, it was wonderful, and to me, it was, it was very important, and there were many people there that were honored for their service, and that was something that I thought was, was free, and it was really great. I myself heard about the musical road, and, and I took a, a ride down, and we didn't have to do a U-turn because I wasn't impressed, and I told the city, city manager, I wasn't impressed. Had it been the Star Spangled Banner, maybe I would have been impressed, but, but anyway, I just wanted to, to say that. I wish that our citizens were as involved and as passionate about calling in the crime that they see. I appreciate, Mr., is it Sunstrom? I appreciate you coming and speaking about that. The burglary that just happened, and it was citizens that called in, that got the identity, that got the license plate number, that ended up with four arrests. That is what we need people involved with. That's what impresses me. There were several things that I really appreciated you bringing up, the saggy-baggy britches and the I2, find that offensive, and, you know, maybe that's something that the city council needs to look into sometime. I did a little bit of research into that. It seems that that fashion statement came from the prisons, and that's something that I, I wonder if some of those kids even know what they're doing. I was given a little bit more information that I don't think is for public, that I won't say what it was called. But anyway, also, I wanted to say the Section 8 fraud hotline is 877-881-7233. I've been told that you can stay anonymous when you call that in. The citizens have got to get involved. We do not have enough deputies. We do not have enough code enforcement. We do not have enough HUD inspectors. It's gotta be call generated, that our citizens are the ones who call these people in, give the tips, and so that we can have the deputies and the code enforcement and people do their jobs. And they work very hard at it, and I really appreciate everything that those people are doing. The last item is that I have, I have a new pin, and they wouldn't let me wear it up here, but if anybody wants to see my, it's a political pin, so if anybody wants to see it afterwards, I'd be glad to show it to them. Thank you.
Well... Well, I want to see it now. Ooh, I like this.
Don't tell them who the graphic artist was on that one.
Yes, that's an M-16. Any other comments?
I have several also. One is, I'd like to thank staff for a wonderful aerospace walk of honor, and I know Lyle, all the way down, I think every part of staff works on a little bit of something like that that we put on. And we have Dennis Davenport here, who was with our city for years, and I think this was his baby, and I think, Henry, you were there at the first one, so this was our nineteenth year, right? And next year's gonna be our twentieth year, and just a fantastic job. And to just dovetail that into Lyle leaving, I still... I'm still of the opinion that we have to take a vote before he can go. I'd like to keep him. I think his wife would vote no on that. But Lyle's just done a wonderful job, and when you talk about everything the city does, it's sort of like a home. Everything that all the staff does is important. There's law enforcement, there's public... You know, there's public work, there's planning, there's all these things, just like at your own house. You have plumbing, and you have the kitchen, and you have all these things. But what Lyle did for our city is he created the couch and the fireplace. It's what made our city a home. Thank you. Okay, a couple other things.
You know he was emotional, did you?
We were talking about certificates last week, or two weeks ago, and it's unfortunate that some people in the past have used certificates that we've given out here as a city for political purposes, and I think we need to get away from that. And I liked what Councilman Silvio said, is that the council needs to give out some of the things. And so what I'd like, I talked to the mayor about it, I talked to the city manager about it, I'd like to see us create some new awards for our citizens. One is, we do need a special award for men in arms and women in arms that have died, or our law enforcement officers, or our firemen, or citizens that have risked their life. And we need some kind of special award for that. I think we also need some awards for people who do outstanding things, sort of the unsung hero... I don't want to use the word heroes, because heroes is special, but for our citizens who do special things. And so I'd like our staff and the mayor, we were talking about, to look into what we can do in formulating these things for the future, if that's okay with the rest of the council also, if we have a consensus to have staff look on that. I don't know if the mayor wanted to say a few things on that also.
Only that I think that if anyone wants to get involved in that, I think that we do need to elevate the awards given by the city to a different plane, that we welcome your input. Send me an email, we'll put you on a group that'll sit down and figure out the criteria for these things, and we'd love to have your participation.
And lastly, the last thing I've had, we've been talking about water conservation and zero-scaping, and the interesting thing is that a lot of times, people, even I've called landscape architects, and some other people, staff members have, and said, "We'd like to zero-scape our front yard," and they go, "Okay." You know, what is that? It's not gravel with a cactus in the middle of it. Tom DePrima from KB Homes, I think he's the president of the Southwest Region, the fairgrounds has some federal grant money that they'd like to use. I've also had the Kiwanis approach me, and we've had a number of different agencies come and get together, and what they'd like to do is maybe have the city facilitate these agencies getting together and create, not only for adults, but maybe especially for our college and high school students, sort of a competition of zero-scaping. And how can we conserve water, so we not only engage the citizens, but we also create a showcase, either at the fairgrounds, or Tom DePrima said, maybe a couple of his model homes, to show citizens, hey, you know, it's getting tough, it's getting tight, this is something that you can do, and maybe give out some scholarships. So the city manager and I have decided that we're gonna sit down with our Water Ad Hoc Committee and discuss it with the other entities, and maybe move forward on bringing something back to the council that the council, the city can facilitate and bring all of these... They have great ideas. AVAC has been involved in it, too, and we'll just get them all on the same page and moving forward, and maybe do some good things for, not only for the kids, but also for the community. I think it's a good thing to bring the community together.
Perfect. Look forward to it.
I have one more comment. I'm sorry, I skipped this. The... Jen Skidmore brought up that the suggestion that there be like a curfew or a speed limit, I think it was the speed limit, would be changed on the musical road from like five... What did you say, sir? You know, when you said that, I thought, okay, who's gonna enforce that? I mean, honestly, if we put that into effect, someone's gonna have to sit out there, and it probably wouldn't be Captain Anderson that would sit out there and stop those speeders. But, you know, that was the thought that came to my mind. And then the other thing was, is going through the press releases, and there was a press release today, and I think Mayor Parris had a meeting, but if you had looked at this press release, the first 120 days focuses on engagement, and the list of accomplishments already, that Mayor Parris, you know, has been here since the end of April. And, I mean, we've all had a part in it, the city council's had a part in it, the staff has had a part in it, but if you look at the accomplishments that have already, things that have taken place already, that's... Where else does that get done? I'm just blown away, just looking at that list, and I just wanted to say, thank you, Mayor Parris.
Thank you, sure. That actually gets done by a council and a staff that is literally working sixty, seventy hours a week, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. Things are moving, and they're moving in the right direction. The good news is, can I call it a body count, the number of arrests for burglary? Let's call it a body count. The body count's now up to 176 felony burglary arrests since we started the burglary suppression team. That's great news, because we're getting a lot of burglars off the street. The bad news is they're confessing to burglaries we didn't know about, and so the burglary rate will shoot up a little bit before we see it drop down statistically. But we have... They have taken off, taken 176 burglars out of our neighborhoods. I mean, it was inconceivable to me that there were that many out there, and I guess it's still a target-rich environment, huh? But we're working on it. We're making this a much safer place to live. With that, we're going to... Our next regular meeting will be...
Can I cut in there for just a second?
Yes.
Three things. One, we want to thank staff for the aerospace walk of honor. A lot of work goes into that that people don't see, as Mark alluded to. Inspiring words from people such as Eileen Collins, who distilled leadership to its essence in a few minutes. She did an excellent job, and you can see why she is an honorary on the aerospace walk of honor. Lyle Norton, a lot of good things were said about you tonight. One thing I did not hear said was that not only did you propel the Parks, Recreation, and Arts Department, I want to emphasize arts, because I know that's important to you, and sometimes that gets left out, that you elevated that to new heights for the city. But you gave of yourself and volunteered your department to be more than just a Parks, Recs, and Arts Department. You were also involved in any way that you could involve your department in things such as economic development and tying in sports tourism to the overall economic health of the city. There's much that you've done in conjunction with your staff that has gone unheralded, but we do recognize that tonight, and thank you. Mr. Mayor, trying to say that I got rid of the musical road...
That was a joke! It was a joke!
While you're the one that has the bulldozer in front of you. However, I do appreciate your concern for the safety of the musical road, as it's just a matter of time before someone tries to drive backwards to see if it really says, "Buy Honda."
Maybe. Could happen. One second. Lyle?
Yes.
Would you consider being the consultant for the Arts Commission? Now, you'll notice the guy to your left is kind of squishing around. So we're gonna have to work with him, but that should be the next thing on the agenda, I think. What do you think? We didn't ask you, Mr. Bozignian.
I think I have a stake in promoting arts in the community, especially with young people, and so it'd be something that I'd certainly be open to discussing with you.
Let's talk... And all seriousness, let's talk about that in the next week, and let's see what we can do in that regards.
Thank you.
And the reason Mr. Bozignian gets all squirrely about it is because he has to staff all these things I put together. Difficult to do.
Yes, Bishop?
Mr. Mayor, I recognize that I should have spoken before you closed this section, but I wanted to talk two things. One is to let you know that I'd be happy to work with whomever you put together to deal with the promotional issues and raising that to another level. After being on here for eighteen years, I can probably help with that. I'd be glad to. But the main thing I stood for is to... All that's been said about Lyle, Mr. Norton, that one thing he did specifically as far as I'm concerned, that really was for the whole community. You know, most places, whatever the community says, for example, if we're a cowboy area, that's the only music you get. Lyle saw to it that every group in our community was represented when it comes to music. For an example, there's a group known as the Clouds of Joy, which is a black singing group, gospel singing group, and Lyle saw to it that they were here. So I just want to say that all the things that he did in that area helped to bring the community together, even though people probably don't see it. So I appreciate the opportunity. Just to say to Lyle, thanks so much for all you've done, and thanks to his wife here for making the sacrifice that he could do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop.
We would like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Penny Schaefer-Clark. She was a Lancaster resident and Gold Star mother, whose son, Army Specialist Ryan Clark, was killed in Iraq in 2006, and son Staff Sergeant Sean Clark is an airborne ranger serving in Iraq with the 25th Infantry Division. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.